Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Planning and Jody Board, June 22nd, 2022, meeting's called Order. I ask you all to rise and produce your light.
The United States of America and to the Republic for its stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Public business meeting for so freely open public media act has been given by the clerk of the following matter, motion on the bulletin board in the borough post office and email to retrospect and encourage post. Mr. President, vote please.
Chairwoman Cleahan.
Yes.
Mr. Ockley.
Here.
Ms. Gushen.
Here.
Ms. Dodd's excused.
Mr. Vannella.
Here.
Ms. Farmer is absent.
Mr. Rosal.
Here.
Mayor Capas.
Here.
Mr. Venery.
Here.
Ms. Burke.
Here.
Ms. Walker is excused.
Mr. Rowan.
Here.
And Mr. Rock.
Here.
Thank you. I've heard through business the approval of the minutes of the April 27th meeting. Are there any questions or comments on this minutes? May I have taken a motion to approve the minutes of the April 27th meeting, please?
I make a motion to approve.
Ms. Vannella, Mr. Ockley, call in favor.
Aye.
Call opposed, anyone opposed? Okay, thank you for that. For business, we have a resolution granting a use experience to permit the construction of two residential apartment buildings within the C1 commercial zoning district site plan with bulk variances from the 2013. Mr. Rowan.
Yes, this was the African New Stepan Ventures. This was matter, as you recall, was sent back on a, by agreement of the parties, which was subject to some litigation that concluded earlier this year. In any event, yeah, the property lies in the C1 commercial zoning district, 922 East Columbus Road, Block 146 Lot 8. And as the chairwoman stated, it's a use experience permit two residential apartment buildings within the C1 commercial zoning district with bulk variances. Mayor and John, since it's a use experience, would be able to vote on the adoption of the resolution.
And only those who voted on that resolution, oh, sorry, anyone voted on that application is able to vote on the resolution. I entertain a motion to adopt the resolution, please.
I make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Mr. Ockley, Mr. Vannella, Mayor Volpul, please.
Ms. Cleahan.
Yes.
Mr. Ockley.
Yes.
Ms. Gushen.
Yes.
Mr. Vannella.
Yes.
Mr. Rosal.
Yes.
And I wanted, I went at five, but could you sit up here for that last meeting in April?
As I get.
And she can vote on it?
Yes.
Ms. Burke, you think, yes. It's hard to remember from so much ago.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rowan, at this point in time, because mayor and the councilman chief are going to need to accuse themselves on application 2203, Ms. Farmer and Ms. Dodd are excused for this evening. I think it would be appropriate for us to seat Ms. Burke for the applications going forward.
Okay, and who, whose place will she take?
She would be taking Ms. Dodd's place.
Okay.
Come on up, girlfriend. Big girl. Get your big girl chair.
Glad you're here.
That way the applicants will perform.
Mr. Rowan, so with the mayor and the councilman stepping down with the second one, it's only five members that'll be here.
Uh, we'll have six.
Six, I'm sorry. We won't have a full seven.
Uh, well, we need, since it's a use grant, I think we need five.
Right, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, when council comes up on that application, we'll advise him, you know, even maybe just a thousand.
Thank you, okay, good. All right, now the new business, application 2201, this application is for Wawa for minor site plan at 825 North Black Forest Pike. Good evening.
Good evening, my name is Sarah, my name is Sarah Warner, I'm from a private developer playing the applicant Wawa Inc. this evening. We're here for minor site plan approval with regard to the existing location located at 825 North Black Forest Pike, also designated as Block 27, lot 1, of the Borough of Tax Map. I'm sure you're all familiar with this site, we're not proposing any ramp raising this evening, no new development, we're simply seeking minor site plan approval for a few site modifications that are targeted at improving the circulation on site. Those improvements include striping and some additional signage on site with regards to circulation. I have with me tonight one witness who I will turn it over to in just a moment. He is our site engineer and he'll go through the specifics of what being proposed. I would note two things. First, because of the limited nature of this application, no variance or waiver relief is required. And second, we are receiving Mr. Box's June 15th letter. I believe there were a total of five comments in that letter. We can comply with all the comments only though I will make and our engineer will expand on this as with regard to comment, I think it's for concerning the trash enclosure. We have some testimony with respect to that, but I will say we are looking to work with Mr. Box to see how we can comply with that. So, at this time, I have Ron Fox, the holder of engineering, our engineer, if I could have his.
Okay, good. Ron and Ron, do you see, gentlemen, can both raise your right hand. You solemnly swear a firm, the testimony you're about to give this tonight, before this board is truthful and accurate, the best you know.
Yes. Thank you.
Sarah, what we're gonna do before we start, we're gonna mark, and I think this is the only exhibit we have, is the plan by Voeher. We'll mark that Exhibit A1.
Perfect. Thank you. Mr. Claus, could you please provide the word with your educational professional background before we begin?
If I am not sure, I'm familiar with the witnesses qualifications and I have no objection to them being with, expert mention.
Just as an expert, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Easy enough. Mr. Claus, are you familiar with the allegation that was submitted to the board?
Yes, I am.
And did you take part in preparing the plan you're about to go through?
Yes, I did.
Could you please walk the board through what's being proposed this evening?
Sure, I'll, I'll be brief because the improvements aren't real earth shatter or anything like that, but we hope that some of these simple improvements can help out the traffic circulation out there in the site. So, if you notice on the site plan, in Constitution Avenue, the first thing that's on shown is the big box, you see, a lot of places, busy intersections, things like that. So, we're proposing to do not block the box striping within that intersection with our driveway. In addition, at the three approaches, we're proposing do not block the intersection signage, okay, so that as you're approaching it, you're seeing a sign in front of you to that respect. Also, internal to the Wawa driveway, you'll notice two proposed stop signs for people that are approaching from what I'll call the caddy side or building side, they approach that internal intersection to Wawa, there's a stop bar on the ground. So, hopefully they see the stop bar, they're stopping, and they're not approaching any further to lessen people that are in that intersection. And then finally, as you enter the site, we're proposing one sign that says parking in the rear, so that hopefully somebody that sees that is now directed to make a right turn into the site, so that if they want to go parking as opposed to going left, if they want to go again, you'll. So, again, pretty simple improvements, but hopefully, you know, by those four, five, six items, that'll help then that circulation through that intersection at the busy times of the day.
Thank you. Mr. Claus, can you just confirm that the improvements that you've just discussed do not require interference or waiver relief?
That's correct.
Have you had a chance to review Mr. Box's June 15th letter?
Yes, I have.
Could you please first confirm that we're able to comply with, I believe, its items one through three?
Yes.
As well as five?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and with regard to comment four, which discusses the trash on site, could you please provide some insight as to how the applicant intends to come about that?
Sure. On the, what I'll call the north, the northwest corner of the building, back corner of the building, there are trash receptacles out there. There's storage of trash. Within those receptacles, there's also some cardboard stacked there. The kind it was to provide some sort of screening or enclosure there. There are a lot of utilities back in that area, and those, there's gas, there's electric, there also looks like the grease trap runs up through that area. So, a true enclosure may be difficult to construct foundations in the ground and not wanting to hit the existing utilities. What we propose instead would be to do some fencing screen. Some other words, we can put up, you know, a white PVC fence or something to the satisfaction of the engineer and enclose that area in a fencing, so visually you're not seeing it, it would have a gate so that it can still drag the trash in and out for when a trash truck comes up to that area. But again, at least it provides a visual screen through that area. And by doing fencing, at least we can direct the holes in the ground for the posts in certain locations so that we're not interrupting or disturbing any of the existing utilities back through that area.
Mr. Claus, do you feel that you have adequate pickup and disposal of the trash, or are you not having adequate pickup times resulting in an abundance of trash?
We need a question.
I drive a big chair.
We talked to Wawa, they said there's actually five to six pickups during the week. Wawa would agree to look to increase that even more.
Yeah, that's really, generally speaking, in a small town like this, that's what we come across. We come across folks that are very well intended, but for some reason, their scheduling of the trash pickup just isn't adequate for the amount of trash that they produce. And then it involves overflowing of their existing enclosure, of their existing receptacles, and then we have a flooding issue that we don't want whatsoever. So, if you folks would possibly think about having more frequent pickups, you know, and again, you know, with Mr. Box had proposed putting some type of either a, you know, fence enclosure or chain link with the Wawa.
Yeah, I can also clarify too, they currently have about five to six, I believe, which is that, pickups for the trash, for me so far. They are also looking into increasing the cardboard pickup as well, so we will be looking on both fronts, that five to six numbers that encompass the cardboard, so we do believe that that will alleviate some of the concern out there.
Can you show them up where you're talking about this proposed fencing like they?
Sure, so we're talking this corner of the building here.
Where they have their outside dumpsters, there's no trash enclosure that was ever .
But would that fencing impede vehicles turning the corners?
No.
Not if the applicant's engineer does a good job.
Well, there was a reason for the striping to start off with, though.
Well, that's a loading area.
Right. The fencing would be within that loading area, so wouldn't extend any further out there. I wouldn't even propose it more than, you know, maybe 10 feet outside of the wall there. And that would still provide another five feet or so, six feet of stripe area there for any vehicles on, so it certainly wouldn't impede into the drive aisle and we wouldn't go any further than the loading area.
Because my business is next door to Walgreens, it's a tight area, and tractor trailers to cut the corners, and he's like, I don't, he can see.
Right now, they'll be hitting dumpsters, so all for trying.
Or is the dumpsters on the other side?
No, the dumpsters are right there in that corner.
So, they're right there?
Yeah.
Right about there where I drew.
And we didn't have a trash enclosure requirement back then?
Well, we mark, this was your picture, I thought.
Sure.
We can mark this as Barrow 1.
If you look on.
I did see that picture, I apologize.
So, if you look on the photo that's attached, you'll see a good number of trash beams and things like that. So, I have no objection to PVC, white PVC, or if you prefer for durability, and I'll prefer the Wawa, you can use a vinyl coated chain link with the double slots, the kind of, you know, not the, not the single Y, but the double slot, which usually is more durable than the PVC. One hit with a PVC, the fence is gone, but actually probably for the vinyl coated chain link with the double slots. I think that's.
Yeah, we'd be, I was just saying, we'd be happy to make a condition of any.
Did you already have chain link around, like, the propane tanks?
I'm not sure what that.
The chain link.
The gasoline sort of chain.
Yeah, I did quite see it too.
I see it too.
Do you know which right length of height for that chain link fence?
Uh, six foot.
Six foot makes sense. Six foot chain link fence, double, double slot.
PVC coated chain link fence with, with the double privacy slots.
So, it'll work aesthetically and it'll also work functionally.
Sure, absolutely.
And the applicant's already addressed all my comments. One other condition of approval, written in my letter, but I'd like it in the resolution. The applicant will be responsible, that we're at the planning board right now, responsible for submitting a copy of the ordinance that will be create the enforcement of the creation of the do not block the box and the associated signs. The applicant, the applicant's attorney will coordinate with council and councilor for that ordinance.
So, we'll have to adopt the ordinance.
Right, but I just wanted, you know, this is on the applicant.
To provide a test.
To get that to happen and then provide that to the planning board for this, for what we're about.
Yeah.
And that'll just make sure it gets done.
Okay, that's the proposed ordinance for, say that again, Steve.
So, the ordinance allowing for council ordinance, I'm sorry, borough ordinance, I apologize. Can never say council.
Or vice versa.
I'm very sorry. But an ordinance from mayor and council establishing the do not block the intersection striping and signage.
Only 15 years late, we've lost so much business, that was just horrible.
And they're responsible for maintaining it. We're responsible for getting the box. Thank you.
Our duty.
I, I have to say, I'm not kidding, I mean, it's 15 years from now, because it's just been an annoyance, you know, when you, I mean, it's gotta, it has to hurt your numbers when you're trying to have folks go in and out and, it's just don't want to give way and be polite, it has to hurt your numbers, and I think it's, I think it's a great idea, I'm 150% behind it, and I'm okay to propose it because people just don't like some of those. All right, folks.
Don't approve it.
All right, thank you. All right, members of the board, do we have any questions for the applicant?
Madam Chair, I have a few.
Yes, sir.
The site triangle, the bushes on the, on the one side, is anything happening with that? When you're departing, when you're departing, when you're departing and the traffic's coming around on the Constitution?
Can't see.
You can't, you can't see the cars coming out of the lot, and that's where we're having a lot of issues with the police department.
That's, in this area?
Yes.
So. And we'll mark this 83, just so we have it as part of the record.
Okay.
So, these shrubs really have to come down, because that is about 30 inches already, and that's when these are going up, so bigger bee.
82.
So, I'd appreciate it if you could put on the plan, the site triangle for the Constitution driveway, and then note that any vegetation over 30 inches removed.
And that's with a site triangle.
Yeah, that'd probably be a good section for, you know, don't block the box sign ever, everything there.
Okay. But we can't have anything over 30 inches, that's like, going to the wall, that's too many much out there.
Well, I was gonna say, you're talking about low ground, that will not top the wall 30 inches.
Correct.
Is that sign lit, headlight, don't block the?
No.
No.
No, but it's reflective, so headlights. It'll be regular MUTC, MUTCD signage will be reflected.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I want to make sure the engineer has his.
Sure.
We have a long battle with the current management in our corporate office with the corner of Constitution Avenue with drainage coming off of the property. And during winter time, it freezes, and we're having problems with cars sticking out and so forth. And also, the apartment's on a block away, we have a blind person, and he walks that way. We have, we have a pedestrian walk there, and it's a hazard. We have something through the drainage system on it, there's an overflow pipe that comes out, there's no drainage for a block around. And we keep going, so then they have to bring the maintenance guys in to back their out all the internal stormwater pits. So, I want to bring it up because we're talking about traffic going in the property itself, but this is a problem along the public roadway.
But what are you talking about, their property cleaning their inlets?
Well, no, on their, on their property, they have, they have drainage pits that's repainting, endemic overflow.
So, it just needs to be maintained better?
A lot better.
So, you have your own, your own stormwater infiltration system on site, and what I think is, what was I saying, is that you do not believe it's being maintained if you could get with corporate and ask them to follow, I believe that was done under the 2007 rules, so there should be a stormwater maintenance plan. And maybe Joyce, maybe we could look in the file for the prior approvals on this Wawa, maybe we might be able to assist with that. It should be, it should be set right at the facility.
We have a representative of Wawa here.
It should be set right at the facility.
I see her just circling over.
Because that's the requirement. It's supposed to be at the facility, and it'll call out, it'll call out portability, I think that's what you're supposed to do, testing, backing out of the system, you have all the leads and real that.
Because we'd have to get code enforcement to send the summons and all that stuff to get any action taken. And it should just be a normal, maintain under corporation for it.
That's not, that does not need to be put in the resolution, that's already a condition of existing approvals, but just wanted to note that.
Absolutely.
Before we have it, you hear. Eric, anything else?
None, that's what I had for going to site view and so forth, like, you know, that helped everything, and the bullshit status, the other ones.
Thank you, Eric.
Mr. Volpul, conservative, right for public works.
I'm gonna figure that. When I heard maintenance, I figured that.
Are there any other questions from the board for the applicant? Are there any questions from the board for professionals? Ms. Box, your, it goes Mr. Rowan.
Yeah.
Okay, I wanted to. I'm sorry, sorry about that. At this point in time, we want to open the meeting to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this matter and this matter only, please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and be heard. Seeing those in public at this time, wishing to speak on this matter, and the votes are close.
Second.
Mr. Ockley, second, excuse hold data.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, this is an application of Wawa Inc. regarding premises located at 825 North Black Forest Pike, Block 27, lots 1, 1.01 and 1.02. It's an application for minor site plan for the purpose of having approved, proposed new signage and vehicle, vehicle circulation at the property. There are no variances or waivers requested except waivers that were set forth and recommended by Mr. Box in his review letter dated June 15th, items one through seven, which we will analyze in if the, if this matter approves, approves the application. The application, the applicant has stated that they will comply with Mr. Box's comments one, two, three, and five. And as to item four regarding trash, trash receptacles located at the property, the applicant has agreed to install a six-foot chain link style vinyl PVC vinyl coated fence with double, what do we have?
It's privacy slots.
Double privacy slots. And they will also agree to contact their trash removal company to schedule more trash pickups as needed. The condition of the approval that the board has discussed as regarding the vegetation that exists in the site triangle, the condition of approval will be that no vegetation in the site triangle shall be 30 inches, and will be the responsibility of the applicant to maintain and make sure that it does not exceed that height. The other condition of the approval will be, the applicant has agreed that they will be responsible to provide a copy of a proposed ordinance allowing for the establishing of do not block striping and signage, which I guess would be unconstitutional, not Constitution Avenue? Okay, and they will submit that to Mr. Box, myself, and then there, once that's approved, it'll be submitted to town council to act on.
One amendment, you don't want, no bushes in there, is that what you were gonna say?
So, I just wanted to say that it's nothing in 30 inches adjacent to where the driver is, so you have to look at the grades, I don't know them.
Okay. Well, I'm just gonna say that it's 30 inches in that site triangle?
Yes.
Okay. I believe that summarizes what the applicants are applying for and what their agreement and conditions we set forth.
Are there any questions on the resolution? I entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the applicant.
Mr. Ockley, taken by Mr. Vannella, may I vote please, George?
Chairwoman Cleahan.
I want to go against because I think this is a very valid issue that's been on Constitution Avenue for a very long time. I think if anyone had been down that route, they had the problem where it actually impedes traffic on the Black Forest Pike, it impedes traffic all the way around, you know, you might get two cars through that light sometimes, because you have folks staging up and stacking up and not being nice to each other. And I think this is going to not only help Wawa, but I think it's gonna help the overall traffic flow for the Constitution of Black Forest Pike areas. I'm gonna go against on this.
Ms. Gushen?
Yes.
Mr. Vannella?
Yes.
Mr. Rosal?
Yes, I want to approve it also with the recommendations, thank you for that. It addressed everything, but I think it will be very grateful for residents and customers.
Mr. Ockley?
Yes.
Mr. Rowan?
Yes.
Mr. Capas?
Yes.
And Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You are welcome.
Great, thank you.
I wonder why the Wawa, why the Wawa employee does not have a hoodie vest, you sure? You are out of uniform.
I'm gonna ask if you, if you run the OMN manual, you'll read it, you email it to my office.
Absolutely.
I'm gonna, I'm still a little much, that way it will stop the search.
Absolutely, you got it. Thank you.
Thanks, guys, congratulations. But before, before we move on to the next application, because Mayor Capas and the council mad chief have to accuse themselves, Mayor Capas just wanted to make a couple comments on the board, so we'll be right with you guys.
So, I just want to apologize, I'm on the, the use experience, I don't know, show up, I don't know, I don't know. I do want to say a couple quick things so that you're all aware of what's going on. I just want to reiterate one thing about the resolutions, though, the chairwoman and I did speak about that. It's important that even if you don't have a meeting, maybe you have to come in, at least have a minimum of quorum to pass those resolutions, because what it does is it impedes the applicant from moving forward, and the 30-day stop appearance and all that happens. So, myself received a phone call because one of the applicants wanted their resolution, and the chairwoman has to sign it, and you guys have to first adopt it. I think Mr. Rowan had the same problem, where an applicant wanted it signed, and because we haven't always had an agenda, we cancel a meeting, and I think it's important that we at least have, whatever the bare minimum, come in, open the meeting.
I asked, schedule it, and we're good.
And I apologize, because part of it's my fault too, because when I see there's nothing on the agenda, I'm all supportive of canceling the meeting, but I know that it's difficult for some of the applications.
But we're gonna need to know, though, we're gonna need to know when, when that email's coming across as to there's nothing on the agenda so far as applications, we're gonna need to know that there is a resolution that needs to be approved. So, I will get, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Rowan, we have five people?
Yeah, that, that should be, yeah.
Okay. So, you know, I mean, we're not gonna, we're not gonna ask all nine people to show up, but if there is something as far as a resolution needs to be adopted, we're gonna need that on the email saying, there's nothing on the agenda, we'd like to have five volunteers to come in, you know, open the meeting, adopt the resolution, close the meeting, and we're done. I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to impede anyone from their progress on their application, so we just need to make sure that's on the email.
So, I appreciate that.
And then, so if Joyce sends out the email, we'll make sure we look at it for, if there's no applications and there's no resolution. If there's applications, there's one resolution, so you're gonna make those things, I'm gonna ask this, a lot of times when the resolution meetings happen, a lot of times you excuse your engineer and planner from those meetings.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Would anybody be objecting to?
No, 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 no. I'm here.
All right, there you go, that was my answer. I had to get the shot.
I'm to the chairwoman, but I'm just trying to leave these things alone. All right. The second thing I just want to make everybody aware, that the council is. Uh, the second thing I just want to make everybody aware, that the council is looking forward with, um, redevelopment ideas, as we've talked about in the past, um, the council has, uh, we have two redevelopment zones in town, there is some movement going on, the old hotel, there's some movement. Uh, I want to make you all aware in case you're not, uh, council did hire a, we now have an economic development director, Mr. Pasonante, who is the current mayor of Sunken. And the reason we chose him was his extensive experience in some of the, some of the things that they've done, where they, they took a church and converted that and some other properties. And also the fact that even though we have professionals, engineers, and attorneys representing us, it's nice to have someone who's sort of on the political side to understand the political ramifications and needs of the borough, negotiating these pilot programs, negotiating the, uh, project in, in general. So, um, you know, certain, certain things have started to circulate, the La Quinta's going to move forward, once again, everything's going to come from the planning board, but that redevelopment will be kind of set up ahead of time before it comes to this board. Um, so you guys are at least, will have the public hearing and what's required by law.
You still need a redevelopment plan.
Yes.
So the redevelopment plan still has to be prepared by, uh, mayor and councils, uh, and then we'll refer it here to the planning board for consistency with the master plan. So you'll get to see the rulebook, make any comments, report goes back to, uh, mayor and council for second reading.
Yeah. So, um, Mr. Box has, has met with the, uh, the new owners of the hotel, they're very aggressive to get this project moving, so there's a time, not a timeline, but they're, they're just interested to move, uh, as quickly as we can.
We're still waiting as, now, it's on them?
It's on them at this point.
Okay.
You know, but far, you know, we're going to get into meetings and, and what we're supposed to do, so at least we're all aware that these things are coming up.
Is Tapper Street out?
Tapper Street is a hundred percent out. Um, the new owner is the, uh, holding company that basically I think either purchased or had the loan on the, on the property, and they are an organization that takes old hotels and commercial apartments. So just be aware that that's basically the plan, you see that market rated housing is a, is an issue in all the communities. The hotel, and it's, where it's located is, is a, is a good, possibly a good application. Council sort of, uh, has, has been open to it because the idea of a hotel is not going to happen anymore. And right now, what we're doing with allowing Amazon to be there is just a stopgap, just to try to keep it. If the police department was here on the public order, it would say that the property's been difficult on us.
It's getting back to them, we've got summons together, we got to go out and cut it today.
Yeah. So it's been difficult on us, so we're hoping to see some movement on it. Um, and then Mr. Pasonante is also helping us out on the Black Horse Pike, uh, being, you know, the liaison to business owners, property owners that are wanting to maybe do something on there. But of course, everything would go through the process and end up in the planning board. Um, but that's about it, I just want to make sure, because John and I haven't been here as much, and, uh, you know.
I think we should probably, uh, maybe at some point in time have them convene for a meeting and just, uh.
Oh, absolutely. I'm sure we loved it.
And, yeah, I think, I mean, as a Catholic, St. Louis turned into a chicken stand, that's okay.
Well, and I do want to say thank you to you guys always coming to these meetings and always having a quorum, and I know that there's going to be individuals that come and go, and it's always good that we have people stepping up and then filling the, the spots. And, you know, we just have to keep looking for more people to get involved so that we have.
Let, let, let's invite them in, yeah.
I'll make that happen at some point in time so we can.
Also, I'd just like to add, you know, uh, I'm not sure if you can mention, but we've had, uh, ribbon cutting services, we've had eight new businesses, um, introduced themselves to town, we celebrated.
Yeah, it was terrible, it was a Friday night, they got canceled, I ran it out. I was going to be here, I'm on the way down the shore. I was going to be here for that.
It's progress.
I ran it out, that's really good.
It's exciting.
We don't want to take up too much of your time, but I, I don't get here a lot, so now they're kicking me out. All right, thank you, guys.
Good night, everybody.
Bye.
Good night. Oh, you know, I will tell, you mind if I tell them about the old, uh, murder round?
Yeah.
So we do have one more, it's in the redevelopment zone, but they're not going to come in as a redevelopment applicant, um, Popeyes Franchise House has an agreement to purchase, or lease, I think it's more proper, maybe it's a land lease.
Develop.
Little murder round.
Yeah, Popeyes is going to develop, so a franchisee is going to develop.
Yeah. The attorney that was just here also represents the property, uh, across the street, so they'll be coming in front of the planning board, specifically just the planning board, it's not a redevelopment application, you know, um, they did a preliminary just to make sure that it seems to be okay, but they're going to get their application together and submit it to the board. So that'll be good.
It's great, it's good news.
Good to see you.
Okay. See you. Come on.
All right, gentlemen, thank you for your patience. At this point in time, we want to, we want to entertain application twenty-two oh three. This application is Beacon Realty Investments LLC for a use variance, and that is why mayor and council matic had to step down. I want to advise you folks that you are entitled to a quorum of seven. This evening, we have a quorum of six, so at this point in time, it's your decision whether you want to move forward or whether you want to, uh, postpone your application.
Question, you five, you don't, you don't.
Yes, yes, thank you very much. I'm the chair. We will proceed tonight, um, so just by way of introduction, I'm not named Christopher Hurd, law firm publicist Lewis, here on behalf of the applicant, Beacon Realty Investments LLC. Um, we are here tonight seeking a use variance, um, for the property located at six fifteen West Cummins Bridge Road. Um, here with me this evening are John Lewis, on behalf of Beacon, and our professional planner, um, Brian Seidel, Seidel Planning and Design. Um, we can swear them in now, the chair, uh, first, or if by introduction, then our sort of witnesses in.
Well, let's swear them in now, person who goes to swearing, Steve, on this application and then you can, then you can, uh, gentlemen, raise your right hand, you solemnly swear affirm the testimony you're about to give this for tonight is truthful and accurate to best of your knowledge.
Yes.
And, uh, just before I get to the stuff, I'd like to hand out two to you, that's pre marked.
All right, we'll mark this, what, A one?
Yeah, so these are pre-marked as A one through A four.
Oh, okay, you already, I've already.
So just a brief overview, uh, exhibit A one through A three are photos of the property, and exhibit A four is a, uh, plan use map that was prepared by Mr. Seidel. All right, so, uh, with that, with those, or, I'll wait for the, uh, business.
Take one.
All right, great, so, uh, Beacon purchased, uh, this property in February, uh, this year. Uh, this property is located in the Sea Commercial District on Cummins Bridge Road. Residential uses are not specifically permitted in that, uh, district, uh, but this property has been used for, I think it's as a mixed use building with one residential unit and one medical office, I mean, unit. Uh, the residential unit has been used as a residence for approximately thirty years. Um, as you'll note, in looking at exhibits, uh, A one and A two, this building is somewhat, uh, unique for a building in the commercial zone. Um, it's got sort of the character of a residential apartment, uh, building, and, uh, as you'll hear in the testimony, uh, this evening, that residential character carries through to the interior of the building as well. Um, in my opinion, this, this building is not especially suited for commercial use, but that will, our witnesses, I will testify to that, um, effect this evening. Um, as Beacon has come to learn from the prior property owner, um, the previous owner of the property occupied, who had as one as a residence and one as her, um, medical practice, she would have then worked in the space. Um, at some point she moved out, uh, but she continued to rent the medical side to, uh, a massage, uh, therapist, uh, tenant, who also had resided in that space. So as far as Beacon knows, to the extent that this property has been used as a commercial space over the last thirty years, it's only been in conjunction with a residential use, um, it's not going to be used as a standalone commercial space. Um, uh, so, and, uh, since, since purchasing the property earlier this year, uh, Beacon has marketed it, uh, commercially to, uh, tenants to, to try to continue to use the space as a commercial space. It's gotten very little interest, um, uh, and, and, uh, to date, uh, Beacon has not received any vital offers to continue to use this property as, as a, as a commercial space. So, uh, as a process here, um, this evening, Beacon is proposing to convert the existing medical unit of the building into a second, uh, residential, um, unit. As I mentioned at the outset, that does require a use variance, uh, under section seventeen D of the O M N Use Law, um, which we believe is anterly justified in this case. Um, as you'll hear from our witnesses, um, Beacon's proposed use of this property as, as two residential units where there is currently one residential and one medical unit, um, will serve the general welfare, uh, because it will have numerous purposes of zoning. Uh, the property is also particularly suited for this use, um, while Cummins Bridge Road is zone commercial, uh, this particular, this particular area of Cummins Bridge Road is heavily residential, there are numerous residential properties, uh, both, uh, behind at this building and on Cummins Bridge Road in the immediate vicinity. Um, in addition, uh, the character of this building is such that it is, uh, very well suited to continued, uh, residential use, um, much worse over than it is for commercial. Bear with it. You'll also hear testimony tonight showing that, uh, this variance relief will not, will not cause any substantial detriment to the public good or to the zoning plan. Um, Beacon proposes to approve of this building with interior, um, renovations, some exterior improvements, I'm referring that, uh, was currently a vacant commercial space, back into productive use, and, uh, it's been a, it's a property that I know that's consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. Um, I do want to emphasize that, even if the board verifies that there were any detriment to the public good, the zoning plan associated with this variance, there are certainly not a substantial one, and that is a standard of the law. Um, this is a, it's a small parcel, it's a single unit of a, of a existing building that's already used for a residential. Um, so if, even if there were any detriment to the public good or the zoning plan, it's certainly not, not, not a substantial one, and I would submit that, uh, we need with the positive and the negative, uh, criteria for the grant of a, uh, use variance. Now, uh, with that introduction, I'd like to bring up, uh, John Lewis to, uh, to, uh, provide some testimony.
Thanks, Chris. Hello, Mr. Lewis.
Hi, how are you?
John, pardon me, can you introduce yourself, please?
Yeah, my name is John Lewis, um, I'm the founder and owner of, uh, Beacon Realty Investments, I've been in the business since 2017, and, uh, I wanted to move here and work with, uh, as a use variance.
Um, John, so did you hear my introductory comments?
I'm sorry?
Did you hear my introductory comments?
Yes.
Were they sure and accurate?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so when did you buy this property?
I closed on February twenty-eighth of this year.
Okay, and to your knowledge, how was the property used, um, by the previous owner?
So, uh, when I saw, when I first looked at it, it was presented as a mixed use property, uh, half the building, this medical office, the other half being used as residence. Um, as I walked through the property, it seemed to me that it would really be best used as residence, the medical side. Um, to me, it's not conducive to the medical office of regular commercial space, it's, it's kind of, it's more of a residential layout. Uh, there's three rooms upstairs, there are already bedrooms, if you will, they've got closets, um, they've got heat and air conditioning, and then downstairs is a laundry room, as well as a, a half bathroom that we would convert to a full bathroom. Um, so, in, in, in my opinion, it's, it's basically, um, waiting to be used to, to provide housing for, for residents.
And so at the time when you purchased the, so that, uh, one of the two units was being used for the residence and the other half was being used by, I think it was, uh, um, massaged therapy, was that?
Right, it's, um, so it's not, so they, she had a couple of different therapists there, some were massaged, um, some, some, uh, deep tissue, different kinds of, you know, different kinds of stuff there. They called it a wellness. Uh, she was a licensed chiropractor. Um, she had moved out at one point and was, um, renting the facility, the residence to one of the, one of the therapists there. Uh, by the time I purchased it, um, that therapist had vacated the residence.
Um, now, i- if I understand that correctly, after, after you purchased, uh, the property, you offered the, uh, commercial space to the same, uh, commercial tenants to continue to use the property, is that right?
That's correct.
All right, did, did they elect to continue to use the property?
No, there were three therapists there, um, that were basically paying below market rents, uh, and were also being subsidized by the previous owner for cleaning services as well as, uh, utilities. Um, I proposed to them to get a slight, uh, increase in rent as well as start charging for the utilities, um, and it was a graduated schedule so that after a year, you would come up to market value, and each, all three of them decided to, um, just vacate.
As you understood it, so that, so using this space commercially at market rates was not feasible for those tenants?
Correct.
Okay, um, what, did you offer the property, or did you list or otherwise offer the property commercial to anyone else?
Yes, I've had the, um, I've had the building listed on, on the N L S, the multiple listing service, um, I think it was the beginning of, maybe March, beginning of April, I can't remember the exact date, um, it's been several months, um, and, and I've had basically no interest. Um, I've had, um, a couple of cannabis retail inquiries, I cannot do cannabis at this location because I'm a small investor, I have to get a mortgage and insurance, and with that type of business, they're on blacklist, right? I won't be able to get a mortgage and I won't be able to get insurance with the building. Um, I've had two inquiries as far as the medical office was concerned, but that was not for the entire office, that was just for a single room in the, in the office, so that would not be viable.
Um, so you're proposing to, to convert, well, so you're, you are proposing to convert that existing medical office into a residential unit, and also to perform some improvements generally to the interior of the building, is that right?
That's right.
All right, so talk, talk through some of the interior improvements we plan to make.
So the resident side, um, basically was, was, um, very outdated, it was all original interior, um, what we like to do is update, um, update the interiors, basically with new kitchen, cabinetry, flooring, um, sink and bathroom. Um, we renovate, we don't go in there and knock walls down, we don't have to, uh, we like to just do very clean, simple refreshes, if you will, because, you know, you start breaking open walls, you kind of open cans of worms. Um, so we're just bringing everything up to date and, and hopefully adding air conditioning, the, the building is currently oil, and we're converting to gas. Um, and as far as the, um, the commercial side, the three rooms upstairs are, like I said earlier, are perfect for bedrooms, and we have, we have, um, ideas to just add a kitchen in there and expand the bathroom, make a full bathroom, and so, um, we think that two, three bedroom apartments there would, uh, would be really good.
Um, there, there are five parking spaces on the property?
That's correct.
All right, and now, and those would serve both of the residential units?
Correct.
Okay, uh, do you propose any exterior improvements to the property?
So there is a, um, a painted patio in the back that's been overgrown, it needs to be, um, it needs to be cleaned up and refreshed, um, that, that's on the line lines in our budget, as well as we've already, um, handled a lot of the string cleanup, you know, with all the leaves and branches that fall during the winter time, as well as the branch, uh, the other foliage that becomes overgrown, we've taken care of that. I have a, um, a landscaper that comes to the property and, and maintains it every two weeks, it's only ninety-two weeks right now because there's no one living there. Um, as far as, um.
As far as just, just stopping there, so you're saying that if it were occupied, then, uh, that maintenance would be more frequent?
Maintenance would be more frequent, yes.
Okay.
And, um, I mean, there's also, um, just, in one, in a letter that we got from the engineers, they, they talked about, uh, putting a string around the garbage, which made sense to me at the end, uh, something I was going to do, we've already, we've already, we've already addressed that concern.
And just stopping there, so that's, I depicted it in photo A three, of these, I plan to make that improvement.
Right. And, um, my, uh, my insurance company is there to step as well, and we're going to be moving some of the branches that are hanging closely around the building, the roof, removing potential hazards, as well as get some railings on some of the stairs to, uh, to remove additional hazards.
Okay. And just, my last question, so you're familiar with some of the properties that surround this building? Many of those properties are residential, is that right?
Correct.
And that's both behind this building, off Clemens Bridge Road, and also many on Clemens Bridge Road, is that correct?
Right.
Okay. All right, I have things for Lewis, like to bring up on the first round, what are the questions?
Are there any questions from Mr. Lewis and the board?
I have a couple. So, with the brick planter, what do you plan on doing there?
With the brick planter? So, yeah, I mean, it's a big oval shaped planter, it's just something that needs to be maintained and kept pretty.
And there's only five parking spots here?
There is a handicap spot right next to the mailbox or the residence.
They have to have those before.
They are not required to have a handicap spot if you're less than three units.
Okay. Yeah, it seems like, I mean, you can look at the guy's parking on the grass over here and stuff?
Well, so, when the business was running fully commercial, they had a lot of problems with it. They had three types of therapists as well as a chiropractor performing treatments.
And slaves.
They had customers and employees that needed to park, so that wound up being parking on the grass as well as other people parking on other streets and then walking through other people's property to get to the location.
So, how far do you think you go past the parking lot, John, that you own? About thirty feet?
What are you, I'm sorry, I'm...
So, from the picture here?
So, you're here to there, so behind the parking lot, the edge of the property?
I don't know, I guess I've never measured it, but it's probably maybe behind thirty to a half of the whole business?
I mean, so that's a lot of space there to put parking, right?
But they don't need, right now...
You gotta figure three for each unit? Are they three bedrooms each?
They would be three bedroom apartments.
And under residential side improvement standards, that calculates the 2.4 floor, 2.4, 2.4 is five, they add five. I would have no objection if they eliminate the handicap parking stall, that's up to them, but they need...
And now give them six there?
Give them six and maybe they might be able to get seven.
But they already have, they already have enough, they don't need anything else for that.
That's their own decision in terms of operation of their facility, but we already can enforce residential side improvement standards in terms of residential apartments.
Or units or how many?
So, they need it right now.
And the one unit you have now that is residential, it's vacant?
It's currently vacant.
Is that your choice or nobody?
Uh, well...
Especially this one, I just can't see how that's...
So, I was informed by the township, I think the construction office, that I couldn't, I can't rent, I can't rent the residence and not the commercial side to Beacon people.
You said that's not true.
The people in the construction office hold that.
They're not open to each other, are they? They're not?
No.
The units aren't, there's no doors between the units' interior, is there?
No, so they're, there are passers that can be closed off with just a piece of driveway and then there are exterior...
That's probably what...
Exterior...
And they never mentioned that to you?
What's that?
To close it off, so hey, what if I did this, I could rent it?
I said that and they said, well, you can't do that because you can't rent to some, the person that's renting the residence has to be renting the commercial. I honestly did not understand.
Unless that was a variance years ago, they said whoever, I don't know.
Okay. We're fine. That's fine.
Well, I, that's neither here nor there.
Yeah, it's not going to impact those units.
What is Roy been described as, is Roy been an owner-occupied building with a residential use which is not permitted? I don't believe it's ever been approved for...
But it's been there.
It's been there, but an owner-occupied residential use versus a rental use and that's probably what the concern is. But what we're here this evening is...
No variance.
Two, one use variance allowed for two residential uses.
Three bedroom residence.
Yep.
Okay, so you wanted to bring up Brian Seidel, please?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
How's it going, Brian?
I'm doing well.
How are you?
Yeah, I think we did work for, together on the bounty for project, let's see?
All I remember is that you did a great job.
Oh, my God. Well, that was a, we think differently, but...
I appreciate it. I try.
And he's qualified, you still...
No, no, I can't get you there.
So, I haven't lost it yet.
Hello, Brian. If I just, please introduce yourself off the record.
Sure, for the record, my name is Brian Seidel, first name is B.R.I.A.N., last name is Seidel, S.E.I.D.E.L. I'm a New Jersey professional planner certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners. I'm also a landscape architect in Delaware, Pennsylvania, New Jersey, American.
Thanks, Brian. So, are you familiar with the subject property?
I am.
And are you familiar with the uses that surround this property?
Yes.
Okay. And are you familiar with the applicable land use regulations covering this property?
Yes, review of land use regulations, the master plan of the property, the application documents.
Okay. So, maybe by reference to your Exhibit A4, which is the land use plan being discussed here, can you just, you know, just walk through where the property is situated and the uses that surround it?
Sure. So, the existing land use map that was provided, I believe you will have a small copy packaged, is essentially an existing land use map. We're showing Clemens Bridge Road, the subject property is situated between Polly Avenue and Stingley Avenue, we like outlined that with the yellow outline, yellow outline, so to speak. It's an aerial photograph, shows the parcel lines, the green is yellow color are the residential land uses and the red are the commercial land uses. Now, one thing I noted, being out there today, looking at this a little bit closer, my map is a little bit outdated or incorrect. The property that's on the opposite side of Clemens Bridge Road from Stingley Avenue appears to be recently constructed with a residential dwelling on that property. So, while the land use maps represented that as commercial, it's apparently now residential. So, that would be one more residential use in the area. Essentially, just provided this to show all the surrounding properties are generally residential and it joins residential properties at the rear and generally a residential area except for these few commercial properties on Clemens Bridge Road.
Okay. Now, can you, and, pretty much in a moment ago, you declared yourself to be applicable on land use regulations covering this property, can you walk forward through your analysis of land use regulations?
Sure. The property is located in the commercial zoning district, it does permit a variety of commercial uses, retail, personal services, banks, restaurants, pretty much everything, but it doesn't specifically permit residential use. The one thing that we did note though, in the Vulcan area regulations specific to the rear yard regulations here, it does provide specific regulations if the use is a residential use. So, I did think that, noticed that that was peculiar, while it isn't specifically listed as a permitted use, there are regulations to provide setbacks for residential uses.
And so, does that tell you that some residential use is, is not foreign to the used zone, it just contemplates the zoning implications, is that right?
Yes, and I would also imagine with a developed borough in front of me, there are situations like that where those residential and commercial properties do overlap.
So, Brian, sorry about that. Have you looked at all at the master plan?
We have, yes. We, sorry, review the master plan, the master plan does contemplate problems and issues with the commercial district specifically in this area, with smaller block areas, vacancies, limited parking and problems with trying to convert those older dated properties up to modern standards. The master plan does also contemplate finding or promoting adaptive reuse of properties and suggests the borough may support and basically work with property owners and developers to provide those adaptive reuses and infill types of development.
Okay. You've also looked at their Camden County land use plan, in fact, with this application, is that right?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And what, and how would you find there?
Generally, the application is very consistent with the county plan, policy goals number one, five and seven, supporting future growth within former revitalization, redevelopment of underutilized sites, near transit infrastructure, infill development in existing neighborhoods and renovation, reuse of structures. One thing I did fail to mention describing the surroundings is that the property is within, I believe, a hundred or a hundred and fifty feet of New Jersey transit bus stops, which in my opinion does make this very suitable for a residential type of use.
All right. Now, have you analyzed this application in terms of the required positive and negative criteria for use variance?
I have.
Okay. And then, have you reached the conclusion as to whether or not this property is suited for this use?
Yes, I do believe it's particularly suited. You heard testimony describing the interior of the building, it's basically set up as two separate residential units. From the exterior perspective, driving down the street, it appears to be a residential building. It also has the character, architectural character that I believe is contemplated in the master plan and recommended for the commercial district, the brick facade, buildings located near the street and parking located near the rear. I think it's also particularly suited for the residential use based on the rear yard. I had addressed and brought up the rear yard setback regulations for residential uses. This property does have that larger rear yard, I would say it's about fifty feet, it's about, it's an open space, it's an open yard, it has a patio, it does appear to be a residential type of outdoor patio. It's, as I mentioned before, proximate to the bus stop areas, so for all of those reasons, I do believe it is particularly suited for the use.
Okay. Have you analyzed this proposed use in terms of the purposes of zoning as part of the land use law?
Yes, I do believe advancing the purpose of zoning, certainly consistent with the master plan for the reasons I stated, with the infill type of development, specifically addresses purposes A, to guide the appropriate use of land, purpose E, for the appropriate population density for the community, and G, to provide space and appropriate locations for a variety of uses, and P, concentrating development areas for growth, pending accommodated. I think it's also important to point out, while this is a request to convert an existing unit, we're not really expanding the number of units. There's two units there right now, one commercial, one residential, we're not increasing that to provide five residential units, it's still going to be two separate units. Arguably, I think this could be a better situation in the discussion that occurred during the meeting, I heard problems with the parking, traffic with employees working there, arguably with two residential units, I believe there will be less parking concerns, less trips and traffic generated and more resident population to the borough.
And those points you just raised, I feel it's also positive and negative criteria as far as the potential impact of public good, is that right?
Correct. And again, consistent with the residential character of the area, the property does join, it's not overly dense, it's not going to provide a new density that's unfamiliar to the area, so I think the density is very appropriate for the area as well.
And, and I think, I was going to ask for that, just to make sure that's basically covered, so would you also agree that because this area is somewhat heavily residential, is it not going, this proposal is not going to detrimentally impact the neighborhood of the zoning plan?
That's correct.
All right. Now, if the board has any questions for Mr. Seidel, those are all the questions I have.
Another question, Seidel? Okay. Mr. Seidel, thank you very much for your testimony, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. The applicant has addressed all of the comments that are made, the correspondence, they have also reviewed the existing uses, residential use is not permitted in the Seed District and they're seeking use variance, they have provided the provisional force consideration.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Park or Mr. Rowan?
I have one for Mr. Seidel, Steve. So, we approved this, the board approved it? So, they become two residential units, correct?
Yes.
So, what happens with the use, so they're considered legal non-performing or does the commercial...
So, the commercial underlying zone remains in place.
Okay.
So, they, and someone could come in and the applicant could use both units as commercial for any uses that are already permitted in our words, meaning that...
This is after we give him the right, or we don't give him the right to have two units?
Correct. So, they're asking for use variance to use the two units both as residential units.
Okay.
If they wanted to in the future, one or both of the units, or the entire building, they could do any of the permitted uses in the Seed District and South Line.
I understand that, of course.
In terms of a grandfather in, there has been a cessation of the owner-occupied residential use, I do not believe that is grandfathered in based on the testimony that I heard, so that I believe that use is gone. So, they're here tonight to get the ability to use it for two residential units.
Okay. And that, so that approval goes with the land, the yard?
Yes.
So, ten years from now, what happens if the place burns down?
Then, then, if the place burns down, there's still...
Over fifty percent, they can still come back and use it as two residential?
Yes, and they can still use that property as a residential, or go back to the commercial because use variance runs with the land. What you're speaking of, or legally to it, is if there was an existing non-performing use with continuous enjoyment of that use and then, as long as it then burned out to the ground...
That don't apply?
That does not apply. This will be two residential units, in essence, in this configuration. You know, they're allowed to rebuild in this configuration, not in that configuration.
So, the best of both of those?
It can't go back to commercial if the world changes again, you know, that's the flexibility, or this could remain two residential units that are, if they're successful in the evening, that are legally permitted in perpetuity.
Okay. Thank you.
No other questions from the board, for the professionals or for the applicant who opened up the meeting to the public? Anyone in the public wishing to speak on this matter and this matter only, please come up to my conference, state your name and address and return.
Seeing over the public wishes to speak on this matter, I'm going to move to close conference.
Go to Mr. Arquay, second in my institution, all in favor?
Aye.
Close conference is closed, Mr. Rowan.
Okay, this is an application by Beacon Reiting Investment LLC regarding premises located at 15 West Clemens Bridge Road, Lot 89, Lot 1302. The property lies within the Seed Commercial Zoning District. The applicant is seeking a use variance to permit two residential apartments to be used in the existing building, which there was testimony that historically one unit was used as residential use and one was used as a medical office or general offices for the, for some time now. In order to give, grant a use variance, you have, the board has to consider the positive criteria and the negative criteria. The negative criteria is if you do grant this variance, does it materially impact or have a detriment to our zoning ordinance? The positive criteria would be, I think you could consider, as we did in a previous application on East Clemens Bridge Road, are the apartment use or residential use, is the building or the lot suited for that purpose? You can also look, your testimony, there were in both, both the applications, the nature of the area. This appears to be a mixed use, just like another use variance that we had for residential in a commercial zone. There's testimony by the planner that it is mixed use, this particular lot with an emphasis on residential use. You can also consider that, is there a need for residential... a need for residential apartments in our, in our borough, which I, I, I think the, uh, the board does make consideration, um, um, to provide rental units, um, uh, to the existing residents or new residents, uh, the biggest thing is that, that you're satisfied that the granting of this variance does not impact the intent or zoning ordinance, or has a detriment to the surrounding area, but as the planner testified in the, in the, in the max that was presented, it appears that this is a, already a mixed use area, consisting of residential and, and commercial uses.
Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to, uh, grant the variance?
I make a motion to approve the variance, Fred.
Second.
Motion on Mr. Oakley, second on Mr. Seidel, will you have a vote, please?
Chairwoman, please.
I'm going to vote yes on this application, uh, on the merger with the property, I think it is, uh, very well suited for, um, apartments and residential, it does have appropriate parking, I think it will actually, um, diminish the amount of traffic in that area on the Egress, Egress to Clemens Bridge Road, uh, it does have a, uh, close proximity to the Girl Scout, Boy Scout Building, uh, down the street from that one, Sheremington, also is a close proximity to the, uh, the young ladies' softball fields, so any of the children who might live in this will be, have, uh, a nice access to, uh, a place to play, um, break down Stingley Avenue, you have Green Acres Park, so I think, firstly, I think it's very much so in concert with the other properties in the area, and I think it is very well suited, uh, for some, for some families to, uh, to enjoy living in the borough, so I thank you for bringing the property to us, and I'm going to vote yes.
Ms. Seidel?
Yes.
Mr. Vannella?
I'll vote yes, but I, I don't know if I can ask this, but I will anyway, um, so with the parking, can, we make it six spots, and can they be labeled, aligned and labeled?
We really can't force...
It's not forcing, I'm asking, yeah.
They bet the...
And you know what?
We, we need it to be labeled, yeah.
Cause we deal with a lot of people that rent this, believe there's a lot of rent in front of you, and when nothing's designated, then it really turns into issues a lot of times.
Chris, would they designate parking?
I think you're...
If we can get six spaces, other than yes.
Well, you're requiring five, which you meet, I mean, if you can do six...
Even if it's five, I don't care.
All right, five, as long as it's, it's designated parking?
Yeah.
Yes.
And, and clarify, the parking spots are strike that property?
They are.
They are.
Are they already striked?
I'm just getting on the survey.
Yeah, I did it, really, yeah, it didn't look like it, I saw the, uh...
That's four right now.
Handicap.
There's four strikes plus the handicap, so...
Yeah, as well, four strikes.
Okay, so it's already a strike, well, they're, they're going to eliminate the handicap?
Right, okay, so that'll give them five?
That'll give them five.
Alright, that's fine.
Alright, so it's already a strike?
So mine's a yes.
How about we condition that the, that the parking area will...
We should take the best part.
Be, continue to be striped?
Continue to be striped, and that the handicap parking designations will be removed, so who made the motion?
Joe.
Joe, uh...
Governor Del.
I think it'd be appropriate to have a new motion and to review the voting.
Yeah, alright, so we, so what we're going to supplement, we'll start over again, we're going to supplement that, uh, the, would, you know, I instructed you what groups you have to make, what you have to be considering, but the approval would be conditional, the parking area, uh, will contain a minimum of five parking spaces, which will be continued to be striped, and the handicap space, uh, can be removed, will be removed.
And that the parking spaces will be designated by apartment unit.
Okay, and spaces designated as to each unit. Okay.
And I'm going to make a further recommendation, I would suggest that you just designate two spaces for each unit, with the fifth space as being the visitor's space, that would, that'd be, that'd be consistent with residential site group standards.
And you, right.
If that's okay, you two.
That makes a lot of sense.
Visitor, okay.
So with that, we need a...
I would want to entertain a, uh, a motion to approve the use variance, application twenty-two oh-three.
I make a motion to approve with revisions as stated by professionals.
Second.
Let's be, Mr. Oakley, second on the seclusion, vote, please.
Chairwoman, please.
I would like to, uh, reiterate all my previous comments, um, in the VS.
Ms. Seidel?
Yes.
Mr. Vannella?
Yes.
Mr. Rozoff?
Yes.
Mr. Oakley?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, too lucky to be Friday.
Thank you so much.
You are welcome. I'd just want to comment. I'm going to open up the meeting to the public, anyone from the public wishing to speak on any matter whatsoever, please come to my microphone, state your name and address, and you're up.
See, no, if the board wants to speak at this time, I make a motion to hold the conference.
First, Mr. Oakley, second on the seclusion, on favor?
Alright.
Listen to the chairman. Fall in favor? Eight zero eight fifteen.